Okay, welcome to the Hamden Town Council meeting, February 16, 2016. If you can now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
I do.
Councilor McPike?
B, four B.
And what's your question?
Oh, okay. That's a Services Committee minutes, and that was taken down as a six to zero vote in favor of, and the minutes that we approved were back in December, and I was not a member of it at that time. And I was counted in as voting, and I don't think I should be.
You want to strike it?
Yes. I don't know whether you want to go five to zero or just word it somehow that I wasn't a member at that time, what you want to do, but...
Okay. All right, we'll make that change.
Council McAvoy?
Yeah, I'd like to pull B, three A, the Penobscot Down East Cable Television Consortium Broadcast Equipment Reimbursement.
And the question?
I have several. I think I heard at some point over the last couple of years that this organization supposedly does some sort of a negotiating for us, or handles as our liaison between the cable supplier and us. So my question is, what do they actually do? I mean, we charge, we get a franchise fee from Time Warner currently of three percent of their basic, you know, thing, like, the one I'm looking at here is, you know, the franchise fee is a dollar and fifty-six cents per basic subscriber. So I'm guessing that's a, you know, that's a variable amount that is paid to the town over a period of time, so I don't see how that's a negotiated item or requires any interaction. It's there, and they're required to charge that and pass that through to us. So, again, my question is, what do they actually do for us? I know it indicates in here that we pay some annual dues, and I'm presuming that that's based upon our franchise fee. I mean, I don't know that, I've never seen the agreement. And so that whatever they pull, whatever they skim off the top of that and put into some sort of a fund, apparently, they divvy this up by application, or somebody sends them an application like we did, and they do or do not, you know, give us any money. So I'm just curious what the purpose of belonging to this organization really is. I mean, who benefits from it except for these guys? We don't, that I can see. So if someone could find me a copy of this agreement that, you know, points out what it is they do for us, and how much they charge us, and how much money they've skimmed off the top over the last ten years, and, you know, who's it gone to, and, you know, how much have we got, you know, just, I just don't see where it's of any benefit to us. I'm presuming that any of the members to this thing, by definition, have to get back less than what they've contributed. I'm guessing these, you know, the economic development folks, I'm guessing, don't work for nothing, so they're, you know, they're going to take their piece of the pie. So, that's my question. So if I could have some of that documentation at some point, that'd be really good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, public comment? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the changes made?
Move to accept the consent agenda, minus the two changes discussed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the next item up is public comments. At this time, the public can comment on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Anybody from the public like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item up will be item D two, Public Hearing Amendments to the Fees Ordinance for the Article 2.9 sewer rates. I'll have the town manager Angus Jennings go through the slide presentation that he's presented first, and then we'll have public comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right. As I believe the council is aware, the sewer fund has been operating at a deficit for a number of years, and the situation set out in detail in a December 7th memo to the Finance Committee and January 12th memo to the Infrastructure Committee. So I know that my predecessor, the former town manager, had talked with the council about sewer rate adjustments over the years, and when I was hired, and when the Public Works Director was hired, she notified the Public Works Director that the, she felt that the sewer rates would need to increase within six months to prevent further inter-fund transfers. In order for the sewer to stay current with its bills over the years, it has relied on a number of inter-fund transfers, which are essentially zero-interest loans from the general fund. At year-end fiscal, fiscal year-end fifteen, as of the end of June, the balance that was due from the sewer fund to the general fund was $541,666. And so far this year, in order for the sewer fund to make debt service payments, additional inter-fund transfers of about $110,000 have been, have taken place. So what I've put together that's up on the screen is a fee estimating, or rate estimating worksheet, which allows for changes to basically the budgeted expense amounts, the service charge, the capital charge, as well as the tier at which the capital charge doubles and triples under the terms of the ordinance. So it's, I've included in the memo in tonight's packet, a estimated FY17 expenses for the sewer of $940,000. I know our Public Works Director is here tonight and has some additional thoughts on whether that's the right number to use. But assuming it's $940,000, just for the sake of discussion, I've set out five different scenarios in your packet of combinations of service charge, capital charge, and multiplier for capital charge that would achieve those revenues for FY17. If a, if the rates are adjusted before the end of February, it would take thirty days for any ordinance change to go into effect. So my recommendation is that we change the rates before the end of the month, so that those would take into, go into effect for the second quarter billing, beginning on April 1st of this year. The additional revenues from that, from a rate adjustment, would first come in in July or August.
Yep. So now with the public comment, if anybody would like to address the council, now's your opportunity. Please step forward, state your name and your address. Make sure that mic's on, please, Jim.
Yep, I will. My name is Jim Kaiser, 15 Constitution Ave. I understand the basis for a lot of this. Very disappointed in the aspect that we're looking at a rate increase that essentially doubles everybody's sewer bill. Just on a quick review on my own personal bill, if I used the same next year as I did last year, my cost would go from $240 to $450. That's a substantial jump, and I think that's been seen from the percentages in the memo on it from that standpoint. I know it's not an easy thing for us all to bite, and we're probably going to end up having to bite the bullet, but just the scenario on how this has happened, we had a rate increase, I'm not quite sure when, because there was two different dates in memos that was published out on the website. One was 2009, one was 2012, I think. It's not that long ago that these, the rates were increased in a utility standpoint to turn around and increase again. The last increase, by quick calculation, looked like it was about 30%. Now we're looking at a 50% increase. Those are substantial jumps over the time period that we're involved, especially for citizens in town that, you know, are not on a escalating income basis. That's going to be a very, very difficult factor for them to bite over. I'm not quite sure how it all came about. I understand the transfers from the general fund. I've heard rumors about that in the past over the years, but for us to continually do that on a yearly basis just really seemed like some poor mismanagement on it. I know most of you haven't been involved with this, this is pretty much the whole, everybody involved with it has changed over at this point in time. But a number of years ago, we went through the same issue with the water rates. I mean, we went from a fairly low water use, water rate town to one of the highest water rates, water rate towns in the state of Maine. And I'm not sure if anybody's looked at these rates to compare what other towns are doing. I know there is a spreadsheet on, I think, Rural Water Association's website that reviews different rates, but we're talking, I couldn't look at it real quick because it was apples and oranges based on the quantities used for their spreadsheet, but I think that's something that we need to look at also, to see where it's going to put us overall in that equation. Because when you look at somebody that, you know, is down low, and then all of a sudden go in the top tier, it's going to be a very difficult for a lot of people to handle over time. One thing, and I don't know if you included in here, because I didn't see it in the final memo, but there was discussion, I think, early on about the bonding for the business park, the sewer line serving, serving the business park. I know I was on the Economic Development Committee when that was done, and I don't know if it was included in the rate scenario for bond replenishment. It wasn't, okay, because that was never intended to be in there. That was straight associated with the business park and not with the sewer user, so I'm glad that that wasn't included in that. But I just think the council needs to take a real strong look and, and do the best they can to help the citizens of the town where they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Jennings, do you want to answer any of those questions as they come up, or as far as how the rates would compare to other towns?
Sure. Sure. So the, the rate increases prior to tonight, there was a rate increase in 2009 from 328 to 428 on the service charge. The capital charge was not adjusted that night. The prior rate change before 2009 was 1998. The amount of the increase is something that we're all very concerned about and unhappy about, and we'll see where it settles out tonight, but it's what I've recommended because of the, it's basically more than it would need to be but for the inter-fund transfers and the amount that needs to be repaid. That, that causes the need for a greater rate than would otherwise be needed for just system operations and debt service. The question on the business park loan that were, the bond that was issued in 2000, that had been budgeted out of the general fund for a number of years, it dropped out, I believe it was in fiscal year 11, and simply was not budgeted. It was paid for a couple of years in a row out of the host community benefit account. That does show up as amounts due to be returned to the host community benefit, but, but I can't explain why that bond was not budgeted, but it's, I've told the council, and I'll say it again tonight, it'll be part of the FY17 budget to get that 2,000 bond back on the books. And finally, in terms of comparative rates, the report you're referring to is this, the Maine Rural Water Association. We did upload a copy of this to the town website, and basically in section four of this report, it talks about the annual user cost for 8,000 cubic feet of usage, and provides the annual rate amounts. This is a couple of years old, this is 2013, but I did look at the, a Hamden customer who is, who used that amount of water, of discharge during the year, and that person had an annual charge of $414. And I, I don't know if you have, I, we did not include this report in the packet, it was uploaded to the website, but just to look at some communities that as of 2013 had higher annual costs for the same usage, that would include Bangor, Bar Harbor, Bath, Burwick, Bethel, Bitford, Booth Bay, Brewer, Brownville, Bucksport, Callis, Castine, and I, I mean, it goes on. But it's, I think it's a very, very fair question, and I think wherever the rates settle out, you know, and what we, what we'll see tonight is that when we plug in different rates, we can see exactly how it would affect that median user. I don't think I programmed it for someone at 8,000 cubic feet, but we could do that very easily, and even find that tonight to let you know where, with whatever rate we settle at, what that would result in an annual charge.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council?
Jane Jarvey, 10 Sophie Lane. I, first off, would like to thank Mr. Jennings for doing the exemplary job of finding issues and addressing them in a timely fashion. I totally agree our rates need to increase based upon usage. I understand setting up a reserve fund, I think that's totally appropriate. My challenge is with, on the memo that we received was number two, is to pay back the inter-funded transfer. As users of the sewer system, we didn't have a voice in that decision, and none of you did either, because you weren't sitting on the council at that time. But the council made the decision to incur debt in our name, and now, after several years, oh, surprise, you get to pay, and that, that bothers me. The other thing is, it is only on the people that utilize the sewer system, the entire town made the decision, and it's going to all the users of the sewer system, whether they lived here at the time that those inter-fund transfers were made. And, and to me, I understand that the town is doing a very good job of being fiscally responsible going forward, but to saddle on one-seventh of the residents of our town, this additional bill, when we had no say in it, and many of us didn't even live in the town at that time, that, that is of concern to me. But once again, Mr. Jennings has done an outstanding job of bringing it to your attention, just want it equitably addressed for all the citizens of Hamden, because it was their representation that incurred that debt. So if perhaps number two, the inter-fund transfer could be abolished up to a certain point, or be absorbed by all citizens, I think that would be a more equitable way to address that issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Jeremy?
I'm Jeremy W. Jones Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. First, I also want to thank Angus Jennings and our town manager, and any of his crew for uncovering this misappropriation of taxpayer funds. Thank you for bringing it out in public, exposing it to light of day, so that we, as a town, can right this wrong, take care of our citizens, and integrate a system and procedure so that it never happens again. I am in hopes that some accommodation can be made for sewer service users on fixed incomes and special hardships to ease the payment schedule, lest yet another resident be driven from Hamden. So is this a forced loan or a slush fund? Basically, our taxes have been jacked up to subsidize someone flushing their toilet in town. The beneficiary is the sewer user. Us in rural areas pay our own soils engineer to design a system, contractor to install the system, have it inspected, and pay to have it pumped and maintained. The taxes, or that fund that was used to pay off the sewer, for the beneficiaries are the users. They also paid an increase in taxes, but they were the beneficiary. Rural users were not. The need for oversight with checks and balances is painfully obvious here. Some counselors in the past have stated that they are not micromanagers, only policymakers. Others stated that they don't need to get into the weeds of department spending. We say lose the aloof attitude. We want you to get down on your knees and pull all the weeds out with your bare hands. Get down deep in the dirt, bloody your fingers as you follow each vile root to its tip and rip them out. This is Hamden. This is our Garden of Eden. There will be no weeds here. So what else is hiding in the weeds of our department budgets? We, the people, will find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
Alex Gang, Ichabod Lane. I live in the rural district, and, and I've never been on the water sewer bill, but I am in favor of not charging them for the infrastructure charge of the transfers, because I feel everybody in town benefits from the infrastructure increases, because if we have a new development come off that new line or whatever, it's people that are not using it now that will benefit from that infrastructure. And the people that are on it, and have been undercharged, they also pay taxes here, so there's 1,500 roughly, and so they're already paying a good part of that infrastructure charge, so I would, I guess I'd like to know how much the infrastructure charge would be a part of the increase, if, if that wasn't out. Do you have that figure? Okay. But that's, I'd like you to consider just the increase for, for the ongoing continual price for them to pay the fare share, but not the infrastructure. Right?
Yep. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, and public comments are closed. So now, we have to decide which direction we're going to go. Do you want to look that up first and get an answer, and then we'll continue?
All right, so I don't know how, how legible this is to everybody in the audience, but the, before setting rates, we, I had to make some assumptions in terms of what the expenses would be in FY17, so that's what you have in front of you. The sewer fund will have a separate formal budget hearing later this spring concurrent with the other budget hearings, but for tonight's discussion, I've put forward a draft expense budget for FY17. Any of these numbers can change through the course of this discussion, but I've just added a column with a percent, so if you hold a 940,000 expense budget, I've put in a placeholder amount for 100,000 as the FY17 contribution to restore the inter-fund balance. Again, that number can go up or it can go down at the direction of the council, but holding those numbers, 100,000, 940, that 100,000 would represent 11% of the budget. So not necessarily 11% of the, the increase, but 11% of every dollar paid toward the sewer would be, under this scenario, would go back toward the inter-fund transfer.
Council McAvoy?
I think it was Jeremy got me thinking about something. The, even though we've extracted from the general fund, what, $750,000 over the last few, or will be at the end of this fiscal year, correct? About 750-some thousand. Well, the, the rate payers that have been benefiting from that have also been paying their portion of that $750,000, which was represented in increased taxes to cover it, It would seem that we might be able to figure out some equitable distribution or accounting of their contribution over the years to that $750,000 in the increased taxes.
This is making me wish I'd invited the auditor to stay, but, but let me just tell you my understanding of this. The, in terms of whether these inter-fund transfers actually led to a tax increase, that is not my understanding, because the inter-fund transfer amounts still show up on the books as assets to the town of Hamden and as liabilities to the sewer fund. So they're not, there wasn't, in my opinion, monies raised for those transfers. The, the monies that are due back to the general fund are included as assets and are part of the unassigned fund balance that was discussed earlier this evening with the auditor, and in fact represent more than half of the unassigned fund balance. So if, if the decision was made for the town to forgive some or all of that amount, that would stop being an asset, and that would reduce the town's unassigned fund balance.
So basically, unless we could show where, where the taxes were increased simply based upon this extra draw that we were not, you know, was not budgeted for?
But that's part of what's, it took me some time to get my head around this as well with the inter-fund transfers, but they are not budgeted expenditures, because they're not, but from an auditing standpoint, they're not expenditures. They're, they're loans, and the auditor has... has described to me that the use of inter-fund transfers is not uncommon in municipal finance. It is uncommon to the degree that it's been such a regular, you know, source of operating funds for the sewer, but it's not an expenditure. There are municipalities that do have policies in place that require council approval for inter-fund transfers. Hamden, to date, has not had that policy.
Is there a requirement for us to pay it back? Is there a requirement for us to pay it back?
I would, I'll venture an answer and then defer to the town attorney. I would think that as a matter of policy, the council could forgive some of that amount.
I think if you were to not pay it back, you would, it could be characterized as an expenditure of town funds that was made without any council authorization, and that's problematic. So that's not to say that you couldn't, at this point in time, take action that, if you will, retroactively authorizes or ratifies that amount of money, the inter-departmental or inter-fund transfer, and make it a permanent loan as opposed to what you have right now is basically, you've basically lent $100,000 with the expectation that it would be paid back, and if you're going to rid yourself of that expectation, I think it's going to require some action on the part of the council. We couldn't simply walk away tonight without, or in the future, without doing something to rectify it.
So at the end of the day, if we, we have $650,000, $651,000 that is owed. If we were to forgive, let's say, half of that, or 300,000 of that, where would those monies come from? Would it come from the reserve fund?
I think it would have to be budgeted in a subsequent fiscal year because there's nothing in the current fiscal year.
So, and if we budget it, then it's going to cause, it will have an effect on taxes across the board?
Well, it'll have effect on the budget, so whether that's made up in taxes or cuts, it'll have to come from somewhere.
Councilor McAvoy?
Seeing as how the sewer fund is an enterprise account, aren't we under some sort of statutory obligation that that not become a general obligation, you know, taxable obligation? I mean, isn't it supposed to pay for itself? I'm guessing there must be some sort of, you know, you can't pay, you know, for, or borrow for, you know, enterprise account above, you know, what you're getting for user fees. I mean, if that's the case, it makes no sense to have an enterprise account. So, I would guess that, you know, we have some sort of statutory or regulatory obligation to maintain this enterprise account in a, you know, I don't remember what the term is, but, you know, generally accepted accounting, you know, procedure, which we haven't. So, I don't see any way to get out of not paying back the general fund every penny that's been extracted from it to support this enterprise account. I might be wrong, but I don't see any way around it.
Councilor McPike?
Yeah, at our, at our infrastructure committee meeting, I was totally in favor of increasing the expenses, the revenue, up to cover our expenses. I was also very much in favor of increasing our capital amount. We started out, this council started out 2015 year, 2015, 2016, with zero monies for capital expenditures on anything in the sewer, which means that if anything happens, you immediately start dragging money out of something else to do that. I'm also a firm believer that we need to put back into the general fund an amount of monies, and we have, we talked about that at $100,000, start to repay that. This is the first time ever that we, the town of Hamden, has had to get a tax anticipation note and start drawing on that because we don't have enough monies in our general fund because we only get paid twice a year, April and October, and so when we run out of monies, we're now into that. If this money goes back into our general fund, then we'll have those monies to be able to use and not draw on a tax anticipation note. So I'm fully in favor of what we have up here and what we discussed in infrastructure.
Councilor Marble?
Yeah, I want to make sure the public understands that it wasn't just Councilor McPike who was fully in favor of that, but I remember a unanimous vote of this council and committee. And I guess I'll keep my comments very brief. Jim and Jane, you know, for the record, I just entered the world of living on a fixed income, and we are a sewer user. And it's actually easier, I think, for me sitting here to face those costs myself than to look out at the public and say, "I'm in favor of you're incurring those as well." There's no good semantics for this. We inherited a situation, and I don't say that to drop any responsibility we currently have, but we have a responsibility to try to straighten this out as best we can. A lot of time went by with sewer and water users, sewer users not being charged what we should have been to stay current with the costs of the system. I'm especially concerned about some people I've met, some other people I can imagine, who are truly going to face a serious burden in having to pay this. And I wish we collectively had an answer tonight for those relative few who are really going to be burdened by this, and I don't think we're going to come out of this with that kind of accommodation. I hope it doesn't sound lame, but this council is trying to do the right thing, is trying to avoid future additional costs that will burden this town, and understands what those decisions are when they land on current users with the next bill. And I don't have a better way to say that than that.
Councilor Wild?
I live down in District 1, so I'm one of the sewer users also, although I'm not quite as old as this guy over here, so I'm not retired yet. But I do, and I am fully aware of everybody that has the sewer rates and what this is going to do to folks. And Jane, I agree with what you were saying there. There's alternatives to pay it back other than, you know, raising the rates, or if we can forgive that, or anything, or any option that we can actually make this a little easier. This, like Ivan said, or Councilor McPike said, this is the first time we had to borrow money or have a bond. And in itself, while that sounds bad, most municipalities operate that as a status quo. We're one of the few that in the past, until this year, has not operated by borrowing money and then paying it back. So what we're trying to do is make it, take us back to the fiscal spot that we were before this particular issue arose, and we are definitely looking at every single scenario. I think Angus has got a very good presentation coming up here where he's going to be able to show right on the screen, different rates, and what it's going to do to each percentile as far as the bills. And it is in our best interest to make this town fiscally sound as possible. We never know what's coming down the pikes. But with that being said, we are definitely going to try to get the best in the most unencumbered way to make this happen for all of our taxpayers. We don't want to bury anybody. That's the last thing we want to do.
Councilor McAvoy?
Speaking of unbudgeted surprises, which this will be for a lot of our fixed income individuals or, you know, that, if I understand, the billing process and the way it's paid is done on a quarterly basis, correct? I'm sure, well, I shouldn't say I'm sure. It's likely that we could make some sort of monthly arrangements maybe with someone instead of, I mean, they're still going to end up paying the same amount of money, but just on a monthly basis as opposed to each quarter, if I understand correctly. I think we have some individuals that pay their taxes that way now. So, it's an option, you know, but I don't see any way that we can avoid not paying back to the general fund everything that's come out of this, or everything that's been contributed to this enterprise account from general taxation. I don't see any way around it. Thank you.
I have a question. As far as replacing the general fund, if we do part of it through sewer rates, and do we have any bonds that are going to be coming to, or finished in the next, say, couple of years, that we could take that money that we typically have budgeted in our budget now and leave those in there, but put those into the general fund so it doesn't change the mill rate, but it kind of splits the burden with some of the sewer users?
So what you have before you is the complete list of bonds that are currently outstanding, both, basically, the top four are sewer bonds and the bottom four are general obligation bonds. Actually, they're all general obligation bonds, but the first four were issued for the sewer. So, what you can see is that this 1996 sewer revolving, state revolving fund, there's payment due in FY '17, payment due in FY '18, each of about $96,000. That one is paid off fully in FY '18, so drops off the books in FY '19. On the general obligation side, we paid off, this fall, we paid off the 2006 gravel roads bond, so that will not be part of next year's budget. But as was discussed previously, the 2,000 bonds, which had not been budgeted for in the current year's budget, but was, has been paid, that'll come back into the budget. So our budgeted amount will, for the debt on the town side, will not drop significantly next year.
So really, the only one that we're looking at is the 1996 sewage that'll come off? So what, we're looking at FY 2019?
That's right, but unfortunately, with the Bangor improvements that they need to make at the wastewater treatment plant, we're responsible for a percentage of those capital improvements, which has been estimated at 400,000. So any expense of that magnitude would need to be paid over multiple years. We did meet with the director at the treatment plant to talk about whether it might be possible to structure our payments so it doesn't come due for the first time until FY '19 so that it could essentially hold levels flat. And that's something we would need to take up with the city manager and the finance director in Bangor to see whether they could work with us on that.
So basically, looking at both of those, we have situations where it's wash?
Well, really, the sewer bonds still have to be paid for out of the sewer users. So I was looking at the general obligation down at the bottom. So the 2015 one ending and then not being funded for the 2,000, the only option we really have is the one that ends in 2021 to draw from for, out of the general budget that's already budgeted for, correct?
Yes, the current year, I don't have it on this worksheet, but what you can see, this amount, this 437-241, is the current year's debt service that's due. That exceeds the amount that was budgeted for debt service because of the 2,000 bond. In FY '17, the budgeted debt service on the town side will need to be 338. So it's, it's less than what we've actually spent this year, but it's only marginally less than what was budgeted.
I guess my original question is then, if we took, if that bond ends in 2021, and at the end of that bond, take that money that we're budgeting every year and move that, would be the fire station one, I believe, says 21. If we kept budgeting that money so it wouldn't show any increase in the mill and transferred that back into the general fund, because I don't know how long you want to go to replenish the general fund, that's the next question. But that was my thought. That's the closest one that we can actually pull from to try to help offset some of the money there being proposed to pay back. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Councilor McAvoy?
I understand, and it makes sense on the surface, but you still end up with the taxpayers are actually paying for this obligation twice. So, and I don't know how you would ever be able to, you know, create an obligation to yourself. That's a little more than I want to think about at the moment, but any time, under any circumstance, if the, if the general fund is not repaid directly from user fees, any other scenario that you present that uses general obligation, you know, tax money is taxpayer money, non-user taxpayer money to refund or refund again something that we've already funded. So, I don't see any way around it. I understand what you're saying about, you know, if we have $100,000, you know, obligation that's going to disappear in year X, we could keep that $100,000 in the budget and then transfer that to something, but the only place we could be able to transfer would be into the sewer fund into that. So I, I'm not sure how that would work. I mean, again, it's still taxpayer money, non-user money. So I just can't see any scenario where you can't not obligate the users to pay back this money. I mean, it's an unfortunate situation, but it's what we have.
Other comments?
I would venture to recommend not kicking the can down the road too far because we don't know what's going to happen down the road. And I'd like, on the surface, the recommendation of 2021 or whatever that year is, that that falls off, that we start replenish it then. But that's five years from now. We don't know what's going to happen with the state, with the funds that comes from the state of Maine. We don't know what's going to happen with education. We don't know a lot of variables over the next five years. I would tread cautiously on going too far before we start putting this back into the general fund because either way, that money has to go back in there. It has to, one way or the other. And so we've got to figure out the best way to do that, obviously.
I guess you misunderstood, but I wasn't saying wait five years. I was saying we could cut the burden on them, maybe not all of it, within three years. We'll spread it out. They're going to pay a smaller percentage. We're going to continue to add to the general fund, and then as those come off, we could add to it again.
Like, instead of 100,000 a year, 50?
Right, you know, and work it back that way, trying to take, and I don't know numbers-wise what that would reflect, and maybe it won't make any difference.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds a lot better to me. You're right.
I want to put money back in.
I did, I did misunderstand you and apologize about that. I did. So, as long as we're putting money back on board.
Would this be a good time to walk through the different scenarios that achieved the 940, and then by varying different numbers, we can see what that does to those rates? You have in front of you each of the five scenarios. You have in front of you each of the five scenarios. Okay, so, right now, this is set up with a current service charge and the current capital charge, and you can see that based on the 940,000 budget, that shows the capital charge generating 124.5 for a deficit of 257,000 a year, and the operating budget generating about 415,000, which is about 144,000 less than the 940. So if we change the service charge from 428 to 577, that will bring the operating revenues up to just about equal the operating costs. And at that scenario, in order to cover the capital costs, the capital charge would need to move from 1812 to 56, to $56.
Excuse me, question? Mayor Rider? Just for clarification, that an annual amount, town manager?
Yes, yep. So you can see under this scenario, with a 577 usage charge, which is a 35% increase, and a $56 capital charge, which is a 209% increase, that's, that would get you to the revenue shown. Now, I looked at what, how this would affect different users of different amounts of usage of the sewer, and the, with this scenario right here, the, for a customer using in the 25th percentile of usage, so a quarter of users are using less, three quarters are using more, that customer would see a 98% increase. The median customer would, that would represent an 80% increase, and the 75th percentile customer, that would be a 68% increase. So as you can see, this scenario, in my opinion, hits the people hardest who are using the sewer the least. So to me, that doesn't meet the fairness test. So I'm going to jump to scenario C, which is much more in balance. So this is keeping the 577 on the usage charge, and moving the capital charge to $42. Now, and the other change that would need to be made, as you can see, if we leave everything else equal, you're still showing a deficit on the capital side of about 93,000 a year, but if you change the multiplier for when the capital charge goes from one unit to two units, from 3,000 cubic feet to 1,500 cubic feet, that generates enough revenues to cover both operating and capital costs, and it results in a percent increase for the 25th percentile customer of 70%, for the median customer 60%, and for the 75th percentile, 86%. So it's more, it's more spread evenly across the customer base. If you push that multiplier further down, the scenarios that you have, there's one at 1,000 cubic feet, meaning up to 1,000 feet would be one capital charge, 1,000 to 2,000 would be two capital charges, and so forth, that gets you to a percent increase where that would affect a 25th percentile customer, 55% increase. The median customer, 98% increase, so basically doubling the rates, and the 75th percentile customer, 99%. So basically, your higher users would see a greater percentage increase under this scenario. And then the fifth scenario I tested was if you got rid of the capital charge altogether, and absorbed all of the costs of operations into the usage charge, and if you set the usage charge at 974, instead of 428, that would generate the revenues to do that without any capital charge.
Counsel Marvel?
Did you have a chance to look at the ultimate consequence on the different percentile users, like in the other scenarios?
Mm-hmm.
Can you describe how that would play? If you dropped the capital and went to nine, something you just said, for the user rate?
Okay, so in this scenario, you have the service charge alone generating 943-845 per year. This would represent a 45% increase for your 25th percentile customer, a 69% increase for your median user, and an 85% increase for your 75th percentile customer. And these, those same numbers are included in the, that's scenario E in your meeting packet.
Counsel McAvoy?
Where in here does it show how much we would be generating, or how much would be Where it shows the amount that would be given back, or rolled back into the general fund, what, we haven't got there yet?
Well, that's, timing's good on that. So let's go over to the budget side, because this was all based on 940, which is not a foregone conclusion, that's a placeholder number for discussion. And what you have in front of you, which was also in your packet, is the, how that 940,000 was arrived at. And I know our public works director, he just stepped out, but he can speak to the line items on maintenance and some system investments that he would recommend, leaving aside the financial aspect. But what you can see, let's say we drop this 100,000 to 50,000. Okay, so to support an annual expense budget of 890,000, you can see we've now got a surplus, Okay, so with a service charge only, that would be 920 instead of 947, so, and I can, I don't know if, do we want to address the whole capital charge, or no capital charge? Do we want to pick one of these five scenarios as the default one for testing?
I think we need to determine how soon we want to pay the general fund back.
Well, I think we ought to definitely put in the scenarios consistent capital charge, because I think we're going to have problems down the road, we need to have that there, regardless of how we pay back the general fund, or how much we do that, I think we ought to cover our expenses, then we ought to build the capital back up, so in case a line freezes, or a pump station has a problem, that we have that capital fund there.
Well, just to be clear, the capital charge is not specified in the sewer ordinance. That's a local construct, and part of why an apples-to-apples comparison with other towns is difficult, is many other towns do not have a capital charge, it's entirely borne by the service charge. So that was set up, I, I wasn't there, my assumption is that was set up at a point in the past when a bond was issued, and the then council probably said, well, we don't want to raise sewer rates, let's have a capital charge that'll cover that bond. And then that became something that was perpetuated over time, but as bonds were issued, the capital charge was not adjusted to reflect the taking on additional debt, and that's really what caused the problem.
Counsel Royce?
Can we look at a way, and again, this is going to be a burden, however we do it, but for a way to, lack of a better word, ease into it? So we do 50,000 this year, we do 75 next year, we do 100,000 the year after, so that way people can plan accordingly, and budget accordingly, to handle the increases, rather than straight lining 100,000 per year?
I like the scenario where we have the 50,000 going back in, so that we can revisit it, like Counsel Royce just said. So I'd like to get it paid back as soon as possible, but I also don't want to overburden our taxpayers or the sewer users of the town. As long as we have some, something put in place, so that we revisit this every single year as a council, so that down the road, when we're not sitting up here and trying to fix this thing, that it doesn't fall back into the same scenario. I think that's really important, that we address that also.
So what would, well, I guess the next question would be, what is the difference if we did 50,000 versus 100?
He just put it in there, that's it right there.
He just, oh, he did.
So that's a scenario with 50,000, correct?
That's a scenario with 50,000, and, because that's not going to affect the capital charge, because the capital's amount stays the same. So that would come out of the service charge, and that would allow a rate of 525 to generate revenues to cover an operating cost with a $50,000 payback.
What does that, what does that come out to, to the average ratepayer? I mean, in a year, or in a quarterly bill?
So your median customer, that would be, they're currently paying $282.20 a year, their new cost would be 425, so it would be a $143 annual increase, which is a 51% increase.
A little under 12 bucks a month.
It would go, their monthly cost would go, yeah, about 12, that's right.
Okay, just to be, I wanted to be real clear, that we're not talking thousands of dollars for increases for everybody, we're talking 12 dollars a month under that.
That's right.
And that's a 50,000 a year payback?
That's right.
Okay.
What was the 100,000?
I think it's in the memo. And the scenario that I've got up here has the capital charge at 1,500 instead of 3,000. So if we stuck with that scenario, that would have been, for the median customer, an increase of 60%, and right now, it's at 51%.
That's the difference between going from 50,000 a year to 100,000 a year?
Yes.
What is that, in a dollar term?
For, for the customer?
Yeah.
For the median customer, their current cost is 282 dollars a year, their new cost would be 425.25, so an increase of 143 dollars a year.
That's at 100,000?
No, that's at 50,000.
Right.
What's the same, just change that to 100,000 payback, and what would be the dollar figure per month increases, what I think we're looking for?
So that would, I don't remember what the numbers we were just looking at, but basically, that would be a 14 dollar a month increase, instead of a 12 dollar a month increase. And that's just for your median usage customer.
Okay, yeah, that's good information to have. Thank you, Angus.
Counsel Marvel?
Yeah, at the risk of getting lost in this, let me verify one thing, and then share an observation. Angus, you've told us that having a capital charge was a local construct, it's not something in statute.
Not only is it not in statute, it's not in your ordinance.
Okay, so one way or another, we're looking at money to pay back, to stay current and to pay a fund back. Doesn't matter if we call it service fee, rate charge, capital charge, we're talking same money coming out of customers.
Correct, I think if the council maintains a capital charge and a service charge, it makes sense, and I think the discussion we had at the infrastructure meeting was that the capital charge be set at a point that covers debt service, and the service charge be set at a, that covers operating costs. So if you maintain that, I think it makes sense to, but frankly, what I would like to see happen, if we do maintain that, is to start to actually segregate the collections, so that we're actually accounting for them as separate revenue accounts, which we're not doing. It's all going into a single pool of money. So the theory, that I assume was in the council's intent, when the capital charge was first put into place many, many years ago, was to do just that.
Not to muck up the works, but I've been trying to keep up with each scenario, and looking at scenario E, with the usage charge at 974, and no capital charge, seemed to be one of the best outcomes in terms of what that did to the different percentile customers, and had a less significant hit on what I'm imagining are single people living more or less on fixed incomes, because that was only a 45% increase. So if there is a way, and I don't know what it would be, to be honest with you, to get at those kinds of outcomes, but have a capital charge as part of the formula, I'd be pretty supportive of that.
Counsel McAvoy?
I'll add something else to the discussion here. Instead of doing this as, as a rate issue, because we're going to, the rate is going to have to escalate each time the Bangor, or each time Bangor, you know, raises theirs, and I'm guessing they do that on a percentage of whatever their rate happens to be at the time. So couldn't we break this out and say, well, your rate, the rate today, because it's a pass-through rate in theory, right? I mean, we pay them whatever they charge us, that's what we charge, right? So why don't, why don't we set that rate with an automatic escalator, if possible, I don't know if it's possible, but, you know, so that it increases each time the Bangor rate goes up, this rate goes up. Then there's a separate charge on there, a surcharge, if you will, to pay down the general fund obligation, and when that is completed, that disappears. Instead of keeping it, because if you keep it wrapped into this rate, you know, the base rate, it's kind of a compounding, you know, situation where you're paying, if Bangor goes up, say, 10%, well, they're going up 10% on 5, we're going up 10% on 577, or whatever it happens to be. So actually, we're charging more. So actually, we're, we're charging more, you know, it's more of an increase than it would have been had it was based upon the simple pass-through rate. So is that possible? Can we do that? Have a, you know, just have a separate charge? And when it's gone, you know, when it's paid back, it's gone.
Yeah, let me speak to the first question first, and I looked to the town attorney to verify this, but I do not believe that this council can take any action that binds the action of future councils. So something like setting an automatic escalator, I don't, I don't believe is allowable. But in terms of your second question, of whether the amount for the general fund payback could, could appear as a surcharge on the bill, I believe it could. I don't see why not. I didn't run that scenario, but if we took that number out and of the assumed FY '17 expense budget and set the rates accordingly, and then basically figured out the difference of what, what constitutes that extra amount, I mean, it would, that's certainly doable if that's the will of the council. The problem in terms of logistics and tonight is I don't think we could arrive at those numbers tonight. So that would be a logistical challenge.
I do think that the town manager is correct, or at least it would probably be prudent not to try to bind a future council with lockstep rate increases that are predetermined by this council, although they follow, they follow a formula that is known to you, that is, if I understood correctly, that as Bangor goes, so goes Hampton, essentially is what you would be saying. I don't think that precludes each successive council from doing that. But probably adopting an ordinance to that effect would not be an appropriate thing to do because it would be binding upon another council. Not that they couldn't undo that ordinance, I suppose.
Right. But we could certainly do it as a policy.
Yes.
Well, and it should be noted, the sewer ordinance already calls for annual reviews of the sewer rates. And that's, as I've said in the correspondence, that's certainly something that you can expect and that customers can expect.
Angus, so I just want to simplify this whole thing. We went from 50,000 to payback to 100,000. We only saw a $2 a month increase, correct? So if we had zero, it'd be $2 less. So I guess for every 50 we put in there, you're basically looking, and this is really for all of you, an additional $2 in your bill each month. So a majority of this increase really is, yes, you know, how, about $4 is to, on a monthly basis, to pay back the debt that's owed to the town. But a majority of this, most of this is just getting the bill where it should be in order for us, or to the rates that we're being charged by Bangor. So I think we're, we're getting hung up on the amount and every dollar I know is important, but when you look at the big picture, very small percentage of that is really going back to pay the town. Most of that's just to pay the cost on a month, month in and month out basis.
I don't know if you want to stop right here and take a five-minute break and then we'll come back. Okay.
Your call.
We'll be back in five minutes. Okay, welcome back. At this time, I guess I'd like to have Sean Currie, the Public Works Director, come forward and explain some of the costs that are represented up here and why they came up with these numbers that we need for the sewer.
I just wanted to state that, as Mr. McAvoy stated, the pass-through costs, some of those pass-through costs, they are pass-through costs, but we also are responsible for maintaining the sewer system itself. And so we do have additional cost to that. We have items like sewer easements that need to be cleared. We have CSO tanks that need to be maintained and pump station contracts and so forth. There are additional costs to maintain the system other than just the pass-through costs from the treatment in Bangor. So we do need to make sure that we are budgeting for some of those additional costs that we are going to occur, incur going forward. So I don't know, Angus, what costs you put up there, just looking at it right now.
Sure. So you'll see in the top expense line, actually, it's, let me, it's this expense line here, maintenance repairs. I had put in 12,000, which was what had been in prior years, town manager budgets for the sewer. And Sean, I believe, is going to recommend that that line item should be 52,000 based on a $40,000 expense for the CSO maintenance.
Yes, we do have CSO maintenance that needs to be done. It's a series of tanks down near the wastewater treatment, excuse me, the water district. And I believe that was put in in 2000. Correct me if I'm wrong. But that, the joints in that do need to be sealed over time as a preventative maintenance before they do fail. So that would be part of that cost. So that really needs to be done sooner than later. And overall, I would like to try to get the sewer system to a preventative maintenance sewer system versus reactive. Some of the sewer easements, we do not have access right now to those cross-country easements. We need to make sure that we're clearing the land and able to access those if we do ever have an overflow or something take place in those. We need to be able to access those. So there are some external costs that we need to build into the budget for operating We also need to, in order to see where we're at with the sewer system, system-wide, we need to essentially close circuit, televise that system, video that system. We can do a substantial amount of the cleaning, pre-cleaning for that, so we can take that out of that contract. But to come in and have a contractor clean and TV that would be, based on numbers that I got today, about $300,000. And that could be spread out over three or five years. But that would really allow us to see what is taking place in the system and better prioritize our future projects and so forth to completely renovate the system. So there are some external costs that we need to just budget into our operating costs outside of what Bangor's increases are going to be.
This isn't directly for Sean, but I, no, I understand, you know, there needs to be some, some revenue over and above what the pass-through charge is. So couldn't, couldn't that be reflected as, you know, if you look at your phone bill, for instance, you got 15 different charges on this thing and they're getting bigger every day, you know, telling, well, that's for this, it's for that. Couldn't we do the same thing, make a pass-through rate for the usage itself? This is what the water's actually costing you. The reason that your bill is four times what this says it is is because of these other items. Instead of saying, well, your, your, your rate is $9 as opposed to, you know, four or five or whatever it is. I would just think it would make it easier for the user to understand if you say, this is what your rate is, this is what the pass-through rate is, this is what your maintenance fee is, that's what this is, this is what your repayment is, and list them individually and come up with a, you know, an end number. And I'm supposing that there is a reason why these rates are set by ordinance. I'm not sure what that would be, you know, other than the only, I mean, because in theory, we could change these every single month by ordinance if we wanted to go through the public hearing process every single month to do this. And so I'm guessing that that's the only reason that that is done, so that they couldn't be done arbitrarily and capriciously, you know? But it's, it's fairly burdensome at this point to try to, because we don't know. You don't know what, what Bangor is going to, you know, send you a bill next month for, oh gee, you owe us another $500,000 for this or that. Then we have to go through the process all over again.
All right. I just want to, I think, supplement that point. As you know, the timeliness of Bangor's invoices have created real challenges over many years. And I think it's evident here in terms of budgeting, because here we are in mid-February and we have not gotten a single invoice for, from the city of Bangor for anything in the current fiscal year. So that goes back to July 1st. We have no knowledge of what the service charge will be, what the maintenance charge will be. We have estimates that, based on our own historical numbers, but we have not been invoiced. So it does make budgeting extremely challenging.
Counselor McAvoy?
Sean, on this proposed budget we got up here of the 940,000, none of those items that you talked about are built into that?
Only the maintenance and repairs. The CSO tank would be built in at that $52,000 increase. But the others are not built into this.
Well, and even the first one isn't. It's included in the notes section as with the DPW recommendation, but I've, I've left the 12,000 in there because I didn't want to open the meeting with a different expense amount than what had been in your packet.
So that is not built into the 940,000?
So that's actually $40,000 less than what you'd like to see in it right now with the 12,000 as compared to 52.
And we could, you know, the other items could be stretched over time. I think we really should get that CSO tank situated.
Can you tell me what CSO means?
Combined Sewer Overflow Tank. It's our one discharge in town, where if the sewer system backs up, it can discharge out into the river.
Counselor McAvoy?
I got a question for the attorney. Is there any, I mean, by law, are we required, you know, to set these rates through ordinance? I mean, does it have something, is it tied into the enterprise account thing or, okay, so I guess I'm just, you know, I can understand why it's being done, but it would make it a heck of a lot easier to change things, you know, dynamically if we didn't have to go through this, say, you know, I mean, it'd still be just as open as anything else, but so is there a real reason why we do it this way?
I suspect that the reason is that the council can act in, in a few different ways. One is by ordinance, one is by resolve. But by resolve, you're not going to raise money or, or impose fees by resolve in order to do something of that nature. A council acts through its powers to ordain or to enact an ordinance. So I don't think that there's any other way for you to set these rates other than to say, we are going to revise the rate schedule, revise our fee schedule, if you will. I'm not familiar with your practices well enough to know whether there's a, a time of the year when all the rates and fees the year when all the rates and fees for every permit and other charges are brought before the council for adoption, or whether the sewer fee has always been an outlier in that regard. But I don't think that there's any other way, other than this, to impose a fee upon the users, other than to do it through ordinance.
Under the fees ordinance, which the sewer rates are part of, the fees ordinance is required, under the terms, to be brought forward to the council every October. And we started that process in October. We had gotten comments from a number of departments with recommendations for changes to the fee schedules that they oversee. That was about when the sewer issue was starting to become obvious what a big problem it was, so the focus shifted to sewer. But I've wondered about the same thing. I think having all of the fees and rates in the same ordinance is extremely cumbersome. I mean, maybe for next year, we might be able to get all that teed up at the same month, but certainly where I begin in late August, in October, there, you know, when you're talking about everything from what we're charging for swim lessons, to rec programs, to vitrals' license, to building permits, I mean, literally, everything is in one ordinance. I think with a public hearing, legal ads, it's a disincentive to open that six times a year. Is there any way where the count, where an ordinance could authorize the adoption of fees through, say, rules and regulations, which could be adopted through a public meeting, but not necessarily a advertised public hearing?
Yes. So this, you know, that brings up the question for Denise. What does it cost to do something like we just did tonight, the public hearing thing?
I believe the public hearing cost for tonight's meeting was somewhere in the ballpark of $150.
Oh, I thought it was a lot more than that.
I, I'm thinking it was 150, it might have been 180, but depends on the size of the ad and when it's published.
Okay, so...
It's more expensive on a weekend.
Right. So I guess, basically, for me, it comes down to a matter of process, you know, rather than expense, you know, not discounting the cost of what the attorney's charging us for this, but, so...
It is something I'd like to look at next year, not necessarily wholesale, but certainly there's some parts of the fees ordinance, like the price of swim diapers, that, to me, if we can get that to where it's a rules and regulation thing, I think would be a lot cleaner and, over time, would save some legal costs, or legal advertising costs.
Anybody else got any questions for Sean?
Well, this may be to Sean and the town manager at the same time. If I look at Scenario E, and I'm looking there, and Terry, Councilor McAvoy, I understand and appreciate and actually agree with your intent and the recommendations of breaking out the different costs, but I think, at the end of this, the sewer customers are going to pay a monthly amount, and it may be overly complicating it for people to break it out in all that detail. So for now, I'm looking at service charge, only without a capital charge. And my question is, if I'm following this, Sean was talking about the CSO and the need to add an additional $40,000 a year, is that correct?
This would be not yearly.
Not yearly.
This is a project that we need to do now.
Okay, so my question goes back to the town manager. Would the usage charge under Scenario E need to go up from $9.74 to make the budget work?
It would if all other expense lines were held constant. Another way to think of it would be if you kept it at $9.74, but instead of a payback of $100,000, a payback of $60,000 next year with the $40 going to the CSO project.
Also, Sean? Sean, thank you.
Thank you. Just one more thing for the council. I think that the budget process this year will be quite transparent, and I hope to portray that very much.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
So what's the general consensus? Nobody has any ideas?
Well, to keep the process going, I move that we adopt Scenario E with a user charge of $9.74, without a capital charge. Part of my reasoning is that several members of the public cited the sort of disproportionate consequence on people on fixed incomes, for example, and this, while it's a real increase on everybody, seems to hit the lowest-income people, at least by extension, those who use the system the least pay the lowest percentage increase.
I'd second that.
Discussion? Council McAvoy?
I mean, it really doesn't matter, I agree, you know, that the user is going to pay X amount every month, you know, regardless of how you slice it and dice it. I think from, from a retirement standpoint, we have to come up with some sort of a number that we can subtract from this rate, say, in seven years, eight, whatever it takes to pay this back, that amount should be subtracted from this rate. So I think we have to come up with some sort of a number that is in there, is part of this rate structure that is attributed to that $100,000 per year, so that in seven, whatever it is, when this amount is paid back, well, that number is subtracted from the rate. You know, that's all I'm saying, is we just need to know what that number is, or a number of some sort.
Council Wal?
I only have one concern, or maybe question. Our town manager had mentioned that, for accounting purposes, to make this a little bit easier down the road, that we should probably have two different revenue accounts, one for service and one for capital improvements and bond paybacks, and also, I am assuming, paying back this general fund of the money that was moved over to pay the sewer bills in the past. If we only have a flat rate, is that going to make that more difficult for you to do that or accomplish that?
Well, that's never been how it's done. I think what I said is, if we maintain the capital and the service charge, then I would recommend, starting with FY '17, that we account for it in a different way, because that will, you know, make sure that the capital, you know, charges are going to capital and so forth. But that's not to say that we need to keep that capital charge and service charge separately. There's nothing in the ordinance that prescribes that, or, in fact, even mentions a capital charge.
Okay, so down the road, when we do have this completely paid back into the general fund, we basically have another public meeting or so forth, a public hearing, when we adjust the rates, and it's going back, well, hopefully, back down at that point, but I don't have a crystal ball saying that it's going to go back down. Okay, that's, those are my thoughts and concerns, but that's, that's okay.
Council McAvoy?
Well, the rate would have to go down. There's no way to avoid that. It has to go down. Once the general fund money is paid back, then this rate has to be, you know, just by definition, it has to go down by that amount. That's not to say that the rates are not going to continue to go up, because they are. Every single year, they're probably going to, or every two years, or whatever Bangor hits us with, they're still going to go up. But that amount that is dedicated to reducing or eliminating, you know, this obligation of the general fund will have to be subtracted out of that, or, I guess, instead, you could leave it there and use it for something else, but it's still going to be going back into the general fund. So at that point, you have rate payers that are now paying, putting money, rate money, into the, into the general fund, over and above what they should be. So that, I would think that that'd be a problem for me. So the rate will have to go down by X amount, whenever this money's paid back.
Well, I would assume when that $100,000 gets deducted off, that'll show on the charge. I mean, when you start taking that $100,000 out, when it's paid back...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, so it'll, well, if that's all we're going to contribute is $100,000, if you, you know, if we already know what that is, then sure, the rate will be self-adjusting at that point.
Well, if we accept this document that's on the wall right now, which is, I'm assuming is the one that Council McAvoy made the motion for, which has the $100,000 in it, when that debt's paid back, then that $100,000 comes off this formula.
Or 11%.
Or percentage, I, correct?
I'm, I don't, I didn't follow.
Well, I mean, Council McAvoy is concerned about when this $100,000 or when this debt's paid. Well, yeah, it'd be roughly seven years from now, then that $100,000's obviously going to come out of this formula, but that formula is going to change year to year, depending on cost from Bangor and everything else. But yes, the $100,000 will come out. How much difference it makes in the rate, I don't know. Well, I mean, it'll make the same percentage rate.
It's 11% of what we've estimated for FY '17 costs. By FY '24, who knows what percentage it will be, probably less than 11%.
Sounds good to me.
So does that clear up anything?
Good, good. As long as it's done that way.
So we have a motion in a second to accept, what is this, Option E? Further discussion? All those in favor?
There is further discussion, so there was a, you saw a reference in the memo to the subsections 2.9.1.1 and 2.9.1.2. These are in Attachment B of the memo in today's packet, and these refer to sewer customers that are invoiced a flat rate each quarter, because they either are, have well water or have town water, but no meter. And as well as 2.9.3 and 2.9.4, those charges, the last two, 293 and 294, as you can see, are set based on the capital charge. So if sewer goes in front of someone's property, but they're not tied in, they still pay the capital charge. So if we do away with the capital charge, assuming you want to continue to have that property owner pay something for the eligibility to tie into sewer, that number would need to be set. So if we go with the no capital charge, we're not done yet, is my point. We still need to look at those other four line items.
Council McAvoy?
Could these be adjusted by, let's say, if we agree to use, you know, to bring this up to $9.74, if we take that as a matter of percentage of, over what we're charging right now, couldn't you just say, well, it's 50% more, whatever, yours is going up 50%?
Yes, yeah, you could say, if this affects the median user X percent, then we could increase each of those by that same percentage.
Yeah, thanks.
So we got to vote on this first, and then come back to those items?
Sure.
Correct? So here again, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting Item E? All opposed? Okay, motion moves. So now we got to address 2.91, 2.92, 2.93, and 2.94? Correct? Council McAvoy?
Yep. I'll let him do whatever he's doing there, but don't we still, wouldn't we have to rescind, like, 292 and, you know, some of these other, anything that's related to the base rate for the sewer service capital charge? I mean, those will have to be either put to zero or removed, correct? We can't leave them in there.
Which ones are you talking about?
Well, if we just changed, let's say you look at 291, sewer service charge rate, well, we just increased that to, what, nine, whatever it was, okay. But that includes 292, which relates to the service charge, you know, the capital charge. Won't those fees have to be eliminated?
You could either, in my opinion, you could either strike 2.9.2, or you could simply zero out those numbers. I would probably recommend the latter. That way, we keep that structure. That way, if we revisit this in the future and say, oh, that didn't make sense, we won't have lost the structure, and then perhaps, six months or a year from now, when it's revisited, if we decide the usage only makes, does make sense, which I think it does, then that could be struck at that time. But you could just zero them out in the meantime.
We could do that tonight, right? Well, we have to do it tonight. If we change the other one, we have to change these. That's what's up there, right, at zero.
Just so I understand those charges, is the sewer charge flat rate, town water, no meter? So is somebody using the sewer system, but if we eliminate this, then they're not paying anything for the sewer system?
Unless you replace that number with a different number. Wait, are, no, no. Okay, no, 2911 and 2912 could be left as is, but the reason they were set that way at the time was based on what was, what would be the expected usage of a typical household at that time.
Okay.
So that's why those numbers were set the way they are. I have a memo from the former town manager dated 2004, that basically sets out the rationale for those 2911 and 2912.
I just want to make sure that what we're voting on is not someone that's tied into the sewer system and using the system, but not paying a thing.
No, there's no one like that.
Okay, thank you.
So I did, I did run some scenario of, if you simply take those four figures in those four sections that we talked about, and if you multiply them by the percent increase of the median user, this is the revised numbers you get are 108.64, 178.32, 30.64, and 30.64. Now, you know, it may not, it may be that applying it to the median user isn't the right thing, because these might be low users, especially those 293 and 294. It might be more appropriate to apply the percent increase for the 25th percentile customer, which is a lower percent increase, 45% compared to 69%.
Council McAvoy?
So... So, do we have to make the changes to these, these other rates, you know, the flat rate tonight, and, or can we just wait? I mean, I'm still not, I mean, unless the town manager knows what these rates are actually going to be as a matter of percentage of change compared to what they were, I have no problem with that. So then our next vote would be, if we do that, is to come back and just put a zero in where these other sewer service capital charge numbers are, correct? Thank you.
All right, so I just, we've got now a couple of scenarios for those rates indexed to the median invoice increase of 69%. And then the second column here is indexed to the 25th percentile user, which is a 45% increase.
So why would you put them in the median if they don't even use the sewer? Why wouldn't you just put them to the 25 percentile?
Yeah, that seems more fair.
Seems to make... So that being said, no matter what that formula works out to, they're going to be indexed to that 25 percentile, whatever their increase is when we finalize, correct? Is that what you was driving at, Terry?
I think so, yes. I mean, my guess is that these are basically arbitrary numbers to begin with.
Sorry. Are you referring to the 2911 and 2912?
Yes.
I think at the time they were set, they did bear some relationship to what the typical customer was paying at that time. But that was back in 2004. And for example, in 2009, when the last time the sewer rates were increased, there was no change to those sections. So that's out of step with what the actual customer is paying today.
So what we'll be voting on tonight will be particular numbers for 2911 and 2912, correct, as opposed to the 64.24 and the 105.44, which just have two different numbers?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council McPike?
Is it my understanding that 2911 and 2912 are users of the sewer but no means of measuring what's going in? Okay. What was your percentage increase? You put them in the lower percentile?
The ones of median, the middle one.
Is a 45% increase.
So 45% increase for the 25th percentile customer.
But the other number was the median, right?
Right. Yeah, because when you structure it without the capital charge, it has the effect of, it's much more directly tied, it's entirely tied to usage.
Right.
So you don't have the, the people using the least are paying the least. So we're seeing the least percentage increase.
Council McAvoy?
Still confused, I guess. Okay, so we just increased the rate, and again, I'm going to refer to 291, which is today, well, up until 15 minutes ago, $4.28. Can we just up that to what, 974 or whatever? Right? Okay. So what's the percentage increase from 4.28 to 974?
It's a 128% increase balanced by 100% decrease on the capital charge.
Okay, so these numbers here...
And just, so with a net effect of, for the median customer of a 69% increase.
Oh, because we removed the...
Capital charge, right.
Okay, but these individuals here, were they also charged this capital rate, this capital charge also?
293 and 294, those fees, as you can see, were established based on the capital charge. 2911 and 2912 do not, are not charged a capital charge.
Okay, so their rate should go up by 128%? If you want to keep it in, you know, with parity with what we just did to everybody else.
Particularly since we have no idea what they're using.
Absolutely.
Well, the rate went up 128, but with the loss of the capital charge, the effect on the customer's bill is a 69% increase.
That's true. For the individuals that were actually paying both the rate and the capital charge, these guys, these users are not being charged a capital rate.
Right.
So theirs would go up, you know, 128%?
But nobody's getting charged a capital charge now, so why would it?
Right, but I'm saying the effect on these users, on these individuals that were not, have not historically paid this capital charge, then if we only increase theirs by the 69% or whatever it is, that means they're still not getting charged for the capital rate, you know, for the capital charge. They're still not getting charged. They've never paid it, as far as I can tell. So in order to, to bring it into parity with the increase on the rate, you know, the ratepayers that have paid both the rate plus the, you know, the capital charge, it has to be, go from X to, you know, 128% more than what it was before. If we want to charge them the capital, you know, fee or whatever you want to call it. If you don't want to, then yes, raise it up by the 69%. That'd be fair. But these individuals have never, like I said, have never paid the service capital charge, as far as I can tell.
Council McPike?
It's my understanding on this sewer ordinance that 292, that 1, 2, 3, and 4, we won't have to do anything with?
Have to bring them to zero.
Right, actually just dismiss them?
Or whatever.
Whatever, zero them out?
So what I've just added is if, if the theory for 2911 and 2912 is that those customers, because you don't know how much they're using, ought to be paying somewhere around what the median customer is paying. Let's say that's the theory. If the, so what I've added here is the estimated annual costs to those customers, if it's indexed to the median, and then if it's indexed to the 25th percent. These are annual costs. So what you can see is if your median customer under the new rate structure would be paying 477 a year, these amounts would, 2911 would be a bit less than that at 435, and 2912 would be significantly more at 713. They'd be closer to the 75th percentile customer. So one, one way you could do it is simply say, okay, if your median customer under the new scenario is paying 477.26, that would be a quarterly rate of 119.32.
Is there any way to get this, do we want to bring it into a percentage increase, or do we want to do each one by a dollar amount? I guess, I guess is what I'm looking at. So we can get this in some form of a motion.
I would think percentage is the fairest way to do it.
And this, we're looking at 120%?
No, the net, the net effect of the rate structure that's on the table right now is a 69% increase to the median customer.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that on sewer ordinance, 2911 and 2912, and 2921, 2, 3, and 4, we zero out. 2911 and 2912, we increase by 69%. 2921, 2, 3, and 4, we zero out. And 293 and 294, we increase by 69%. Get all that?
No.
Okay.
Two point, okay.
Okay, 2.9...
2.911 and 2.912.
Increase by 69%. 2921, 2922, 2923, and 2924, we zero out. 293 and 294, we increase by 69%. I think that covers the boat.
Second.
Any further discussion? Council McAvoy?
I'm just going to have to spend some time thinking about it, because we can revisit this at some other time. But I guess as a council, we'll just have to make sure that each time we come in and raise, you know, the rates, you know, based upon a percentage from Bangor, that we do the exact same thing for every one of these. And, but as far as, you know, the amount that these are being increased right now compared to what every other ratepayer has experienced, I could be wrong, but I don't think they're suffering the same percentage of increase as everybody else is. But like I said, I'm willing to, you know, visit that at some other time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Very good. And that should finish up the amendments to the fees ordinance. So the next item is 3A nominations. It was brought up and discussed tonight for Amy Smith for a reappointment to the Board of Appeals. It was unanimous vote from the Finance Committee to recommend the council, does she be put back on that board? Do I have any public comment? Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we reappoint to the Board of Appeals, Amy Smith.
I second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Next item under unfinished business is the license plate issuance policy review. Finance Committee recommendation. We discussed it tonight about the license plates being done at the town office. The recommendation from Finance was we keep it the same as it is until the first of the year, which is June 30th, and then we'll relook at that again. As it is now, after 430, they do not have to issue plates based on the fact that they cannot get a hold of the state if they need to. If there isn't any problems, they've been issuing those plates right along, so we continue to set it the way it is. Public comment? Discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to accept the recommendations and continue on with the issuing of license plates as we have been for the last three months until we revisit the matter in June 2017.
Second.
Pardon me, June of 2016.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item under unfinished business is 4B, goals and objectives update. Town Manager Jennings?
I have nothing to add beyond what was in your packet. A packet will be circulated for this Saturday session to be, to begin at 8:00 a.m. here in this room. And that'll be when the council sets their goals and objectives for the FY '17 budget cycle.
Council Saroyes?
Is it possible for you to come? I know there was a lot presented by the department heads, and they did a fantastic job, but to come with a list of priorities, things that they needed, but a list of priorities set for each area. So, you know, we look at the budget and we can say, you know, we can do the top two needs in, you know, at the pool or public works. So just to have a list of what the items of need are in a priority set for each one of them.
I do have, yes, I've been working to, with each department head to prepare a list of items that we're working on or that they're working on. So I'll have that ready to circulate, as well as a draft of a capital document will be available to look at as well, ahead of the meeting.
Thank you. Next item on the new business is the library lighting electrical work bid results. Finance Committee recommendation was discussed tonight at Finance. It was unanimously recommended to award the bid to Elko Electric, the alternate D1 and M, for the price of $19,267. Public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a recommendation?
I'll make a motion or a recommendation that we accept the bid from Elko Electric for, in the sum of $19,267 for the electrical work at the library.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 5B, confirmation of town manager appointment of town clerk. Town Manager Jennings?
There was a memo in your packet that outlines the process to date, but for those watching at home, we did receive 52 candidates to, for the position of town clerk. We had first round interviews with seven candidates, and we invited three back for second interviews. One of the three withdrew from consideration. So we interviewed two finalists this past Friday. That was myself, Tammy Ewing, our HR Director, and two members of this council, Council McPike and Council Marble. And the four of us were unanimous in our recommendation to appoint Paula Scott, who's currently the town clerk in the town of Newport and has been for 17 years. We're very, very impressed with both her qualifications, her competence, and her demeanor. We think she would both be extremely competent but also a, you know, real team-oriented with a lot of energy. So under the charter, the town clerk appointment is my appointment to make, subject to confirmation of the council. So I would respectfully request the council's confirmation. So I would respectfully request the council's confirmation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
No one's going to make a motion.
Do you want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the town manager's appointment of Paula Scott as the town clerk with the town of Hamden.
Second.
Further discussion? Counselor McAvoy?
Just a question for the town manager. She says that she's a certified clerk of Maine. I'm guessing that travels with her, as well as a deputy treasurer and deputy tax collector. Are these like certified positions? Are they town-specific or anything like that? Or if she's a... You know, if she's a deputy treasurer and deputy tax collector in Newport, does that mean that she's... You know, does she have to do any certification of any kind to be the same thing here?
Not that I'm aware of. I think in terms of her own, you know, professional track that she's on, just like every employee, they've got... We budget for training, and that would be, you know, under the line item for training. But you're correct, that the certification is a statewide certification.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Next item.
And the offer would be contingent upon successful completion of a background check, as would be the case for any employee.
Thank you. The next item on the new business is appointment of Finance Administration Committee Chair. As we passed in the council rules, the mayor no longer has to serve as the chair of Finance. So I was going to nominate Greg Saroyes as the new chair for Finance. So that was just an update to let people know. So with that, committee reports. Counselor McAvoy with services.
Thank you. At our last committee meeting, we talked about the disposition of cash in lieu of land. And if I'm not mistaken, there's about $70,000 in this account. And the consensus seems to be that the funds must be applied to current parks and recreational facilities. And I'm hoping that the, you know, anybody interested in this, you know, as well as the recreation department, will bring some suggestions to the services committee, which meets again on March 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marble, infrastructure?
Well, to the best of my recollection, we have not had a meeting since the last town council meeting. However, we have an infrastructure meeting scheduled for tomorrow night here in Town Hall at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Counselor McPike, planning and development?
I'm trying to remember. I believe we had a planning and development meeting, and to my recollection, Dean didn't give me anything, but I believe it was spent on Fiber Right? I'm looking at the town manager.
That's right. Yeah. Yep.
And I believe that basically took up the whole...
And code enforcement.
And code enforcement. Correct. And the code enforcement had to do with the... With one of the structures in town, I believe, that we looked at to get a price in case it had to be torn down, if it came to that. Other than that, it's a matter of going through the legal ease of the owner in trying to repair the structure and make it sound so that it doesn't become an impairment the way it is. The other part was primarily due to the contracts perk and Fiber Right. A lot of time was spent on that, and it was decided that we would have a... For the town manager's sake, who, doing all, everything he's been doing, was unable to spend enough time on this, as some of the rest of us have, that we would swap, and instead of Wednesday night having our planning and development, that we would have infrastructure on Wednesday night of this week, which is tomorrow night, and then next Monday night would be planning and development, in which would solely be perk and the new MRC Fiber Right plant, and followed by a town council meeting, a special town council meeting directly after that. And I believe we're starting at 6:00.
That's right. Planning and development will be Monday at 6:00, followed by town council at 7:00, which will just have the one item on the agenda.
I believe that's it.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Counselor Saroyes?
Most of the items that we talked about in Finance meeting tonight, we discussed during the council meeting. We had the FYI 2015 audit presentation. A number of items have... Were discovered throughout the audit and are being addressed. And again, most of the conversation tonight was around addressing some of those findings. We also, Woodman Kern invoice came back up for discussion. It was taken out of post-community benefits with the understanding that it'd be paid back through the TIF program. Come to find out, we cannot do that, so the monies will be taken... Have been taken from post-community benefits and will not be repaid. The license plate issuance policy was reviewed, and it has been approved. We'll run it through year-end and continue to view that process for any improvements that we can make or any issues that come up. New business, library lighting and electrical work bid results were awarded to Elko Electric, and we also put forward Amy Smith's application for reappointment to the appeals board. That's it.
Thank you. Managers report. Manager Jennings?
I have no report tonight, other than just to thank both the council and the public for their patience in what was a somewhat grueling public hearing. But there's a reason that's... Problem has been festering for years. It took, you know, took a lot of work from a lot of people to get to where we got, so it wasn't... May not have been pretty, but I think it's credit to those involved.
Thank you. Counselor comments? Counselor McAvoy?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to, you know, the town manager. You know, he's done an incredible amount of work on this, you know, this sewer thing, and I appreciate it, because I, you know, I never could have wrapped my head around it as loosely as I have so far. So I do appreciate that. And I just want to remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. Counselor Colmier? No comment. Counselor Marble?
Couple things quickly. There won't be a District 2 hot stove this Saturday due to the budget meeting. The second item, and I don't have details in front of me, I apologize, but there is a drive about bone marrow for a resident suffering a form of leukemia, I believe, that's scheduled for March 12th. I think it's the second Saturday of March, and I'm pretty sure it takes place at the Hamden Academy. And I want to echo Counselor McAvoy's kudos to the town manager.
Thank you. Counselor Wild?
I want to thank Angus and Sean and anybody else that was... Has been involved in the trying to figure out this sewer rate structure, and it was a lot of hard work. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor McPike?
Just to let everyone know that... Make sure that a week from Monday, or next Monday night, that you attend that planning and development and the council meeting, because it's going to be a critical one on this... On the MRC Fiber Right and/or perk.
Thank you. Counselor Saroyes?
I just want to echo everyone's comments and thank Angus for his efforts with all this. I know it was a challenge, and again, we don't take this responsibility lightly to... Especially to the residents of Hamden and understanding the impact it's going to have on them and their budgets. But it is the right thing to do to get us in a point where we're paying our bills and at the same time paying back the town the monies that's owed. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I want to follow up with everybody that I want to thank. Manager Jennings, I know he put in a lot of hours. I've been in there, and he's had papers piled up three feet high on his desk, and he's been kind of overloaded with it, but I appreciate all the hard work he's put into it, and I want to thank Sean Courier. He's put a lot of hours in on it, too, finding information, getting information. And I just want to echo that sometimes we hear that, you know, you guys aren't being transparent, you're hiding things. And I think this is a classic case that we're not hiding anything. We could have swept this under the rug, not brought it forward, but we've brought it out, and we've let the people know there was mistakes made. We're rectifying those. We've brought them out so the public can see everything that's going on. So just wanted people to know that we're not hiding anything. There's no hanky panky going on. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, Hamden.